I know, I'm the same.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and without individual liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any public here for a public comment. So let's get it started for the community center upgrade bids opened and awarded.
The Jeremy, you want to go on the file?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, before you do that though, I'm not, I'm not sure we'll be able to award. A few of them we can, a few of them, I still, we still need to get a couple more numbers. I feel like simply because I still want to get a couple more, a couple more flooring numbers for sure, just because I don't want the company I work for being the only one that has a bid and I couldn't go to the other companies until I, I wanted to make sure we was getting apples to apples. I wanted, we put it together and I'm gonna delete all the prices and give it to a couple others. But I think we're gonna have budgetary numbers where we know we at least have the bids, so I guess, I guess I don't remember the legal legality of that, but um. You want to get more bids?
Uh huh, just, just for the floor.
The one flooring company that I have a bid for is the company I work for. And I just got it literally ten minutes ago, so I'm gonna have it in, I have it on an email, but I don't have it. But I don't feel right accepting that bid without getting competitors' bids and then I will remove, then I will remove myself from that part of any discussion as far as that goes. Other than I will give my input on knowledge, but when it comes time to decide who does it, I will take my.
Yeah, I understand.
Yep. Do you think that's something you can get by the August meeting?
Yes, cuz now that I have this, she had, the lady that does her commercial at Mercy Gang, so she was running a little behind, so I just got it today. So I'll get it to the other two, I'm gonna take it to Zon's and Stevenson's who are both local. And then they'll have exactly what to bid and then we'll know they're apples to apples. Uh also Brian's anniversary is today, he sent me a text, gave me the numbers. So we can go over all that, I just wanted everybody to know, I'm Brian, he already had plans and this was kind of last minute, so I told him as long as he got my number that we arrived. And we, when, once we get to that part, I will explain some of the things he said to us, said to me, excuse me, that we talked about.
So we're paying your approval with this or can we discuss that first?
Well, yeah, we go on, so okay, Brian, electrical. Brian has the wiring for the two mini splits, new lights for all three rooms, or excuse me, all four rooms. The one thing he doesn't have in his estimate, because he's not exactly sure of what exactly that we're gonna need in here and in the conference room as far as outlets. I don't think, we'll probably need a bunch more outlets in the conference room, I wouldn't think, we only need maybe reroute a couple to get them a little different places, but.
I'm not sure we don't carry it, because it looks like it's not a difficult to me, but.
And so, and he has dimmers on this, um, dimmers. The price could fluctuate a little bit depending on what kind of dimmers he's able to go with, cuz he doesn't know for sure how wire will pull through these old walls and what's inside the walls and what wire, so the wire that's existing might uh predicate what way he has to go with dimmers, uh he's a little hesitant to go with just a switch dimmer, cuz then sometimes they'll, he said you get flickering. So if nobody wants to. Migraine all the time. So, um, but he said he's gonna be between tw- ten and twelve thousand, but he feels like not knowing what some other stuff might come up, we probably ought to budget fifteen thousand for the electrical. And honestly, I felt like that was, that wasn't one I thought it would be, so I was pretty happy to hear that, honestly. He said he couldn't be here tomorrow per se, but he said he could fit it. He has, he doesn't have a timeline for the pilot job, which obviously, and I, you know, obviously there's some things that they'll have to take precedence over some other stuff here and there, but um, he felt like it would be an issue to get everything done once we get going, so. Yeah, you can go back, cuz I'm trying to get this all pulled up.
Okay, first bid is the painting pair, and I think the reason why we did this, we wanted to confirm the type of paint, right? It's Sherwin-Williams, that was the reasoning to clarify a little bit of a price discrepancy, i- is that what I'm recalling? That's why we're back, so this bid says total is uh five thousand for the total job.
What do these, what do these contractors have to have, what do they have to give the talent to normal space? Like really, do they have to have uh?
That'd be, well, they include in the contract, is that, that's what you're talking about, stuff like insurance and things like that?
Yes, 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 I just, I just wanna make sure that whoever knows what they have to provide, cuz I don't know exactly what they have to provide.
So do they have to, obviously they're gonna have to provide liability and there'll be a set number they have to have. Do they have to have a balloon on, a rider on there covering us for extra up to more, more than what they might carry normally?
I don't know, I pulled standard what we use with the city, million dollars. A million dollar excess slash and grow.
That's what I'm wondering, I just want to ask, that's what they did, cuz a lot of the contractors, I'm sure, not a lot of them, some of them would have to probably add that on to their
Sure.
policy, more than likely they're not carrying that much, or a painter, or and then my other question, I think I asked this before, but um, this is a small enough project, they, none of them have, their bonds aren't an issue, right?
You do not require bonds.
Okay.
I didn't know for sure, was it, I knew they had to do something.
I already see a pie, so I will email you a contract, I can either fill them out for you, or I can email you kind of one to fill in the contractor name and just a couple of details.
Okay.
And then the second bid, we have BJ. Amy, okay, and they have their total bill, four thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. And they're showing bear big shelf finish.
Who's the first one you were?
Uh, the painting pair. Do I have?
Is that him, or is that Margies?
This is Margies.
What's all the writing in there?
No, all I did was, they, they just kind of wrote down each room is what they're saying. The painting wall for the council room, the hallway about, they kind of broke it down.
I didn't look at him, so I didn't know if I missed something, or?
No, it's kind of like, they, two coats on it, it was basically. You have any motions, or any comments?
I'm just wondering if two coats, is that, when he says, does he talk about priming and two coats, or is he saying just two coats? Cuz I'm, two coats of primer and one coat of paint will not cover this paneling.
Oh, paint paneling, two coats, that's all he's saying, he's not even saying. And that was, yeah.
I don't know anything about paintings, so I can't tell you what we want.
Well, and to be fair, just, if he buys the top of the line bear paint, it's a decent paint, if you buy another stuff that most do it yourselves, go in there and buy, it's not your paint, it's Sherman Williams paint, it's just facts, facts.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't either, I, I don't know how, when, when they did the upstairs, when they did that, I was on it, I mean, and I don't know, I don't know what he did. And I'm sure he put two coats of something on, but I don't know if it was like um, a, a base and then paint. And he, Sherman Williams, said, he, bears is good paint, do the paint, whatever you want, I don't know. I'm, 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 I, that's what I worry about too, I don't know if they're making um, a base paint and one on top of that will cover. Even with, even with Sherman Williams.
Correct, I don't think it would.
I don't think it would either, and I think that's how they did.
Down here, I'll say paint and. And more, I'm sure, assuming the other company was priming too.
I don't think so, I mean, they came in and looked at it, I don't think they would all need to cover up and. I would imagine they're both, I know what they're doing, unlike Michelle. Are we, do you have a motion or are we, are we trying to decide here?
I'm.
We're still in discussion?
I'm asking this, should we go through all the quotes and for all the different trades to make sure that, I mean, it's looking like we're gonna be well within budget, but before we start awarding, should we look at all of them to see that? But look at the woodworking and everything, cuz I know there's some stuff for the woodworking that I have some discussion I would like.
I see what you mean, see that we can even do it?
Yeah, just to make su- I mean, it's looking like we're gonna be plenty good, but.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm running a hole here, so I'll just uh.
So.
I'll take the higher side of that for right now.
I'll do the flooring now, and then woodwork, that's a big one, that's alright.
And the.
The two flooring numbers, one's the patch craft, which is called the rustic silver, which is kind of the multi-color one, Michelle, that he's looked at. This includes stripping all this carpet in here, Kevin's office, Brian in there stripping all this carpet, prepping all this, um, cuz they're gonna have to grind off all the glue from this carpet, priming it. And not like paint prime, but a prime that you have to do for floors to get the glue to stick, especially over paint and different stuff and, and um, clear coat that's like down in, down in the office, and then it also includes leveling as needed, if there's any humps or bad spots or all that. Job complete, basically, uh, the rustic silver was ten thousand twenty-seven dollars. And then the Brentwood, Mohawk makes it Brentwood, they're nine by sixty planks. Brentwood, windels the collar, which it's not, I didn't bring it back with me, just it's kind of similar to this, only it's a little more brown, but it's a soft, it's a glue down, this is a click together, which would, wouldn't work here. It's a glue down, both these are glue down plank, they're the same thing, one of them's just a little more expensive. The price of the Wendell is seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and to be honest, other than the multi-color from a from a performance standpoint, there's no difference in the two, they're essentially the same product, so from a, this will allow you to roll, have rolling chairs and not have to worry about, mats are still not a terrible idea, but you'll, you'll be okay without mats. So my recommendation from that, matter of fact, I probably won't even have the other two bid the other one, I'll just have them bid that one.
So, just because I'm, I'm running out, but um, so if there was an issue with the flooring, would they come back and fix? If there was, you know, something buckled or something, I mean, just because it is an old building?
We have, there's a warranty.
Okay.
Um, but also the installation is a year, which we're not, I can always speak for us, we usually take care of stuff, especially if it's something that's our fault. Shouldn't say usually, we always get the size we are, but, but there's, there's also warranty stuff that sometimes manufacturers take care of, but really with this glue down, there shouldn't be any issue, um, it's put down with the pressure sensitive glue, so it never truly sets up, so if one gets a big ding in it, it's literally like, I can come in here and pull it up and put a new one in in ten minutes, so. It's pretty rugged stuff, but put it in, put in commercial stuff all the time, so. That would be my recommendation, I'm good with either one, but that would be my recommendation, cuz there's not a big performance difference or anything like that. Um, the only thing I didn't have in that is if we wanna, and I imagine we do, which we're not talking about a bunch of money, but I didn't, I, I don't think I took this back.
Did you put the old one in?
I did not.
I don't.
But you're, well, you're looking at those two bathrooms, you're, I bet it wouldn't be five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So right now, we're about thirty-two, oh, thirty-two dollars.
You, are those the furnace mini split things?
Uh, I don't have that, I didn't, I didn't have it.
Do I have it?
I don't have it.
Oh, I do have, huh, sorry. I've got new eighty-six thirty Myers Heating and Cooling LLC. Maybe I should get the flat.
The four systems, eighteen sear, thirteen thousand two hundred, and then for thirteen systems, twenty-three sear, seven thousand, I'm sorry, uh, fourteen thousand three hundred.
We have one from Lonnie's.
Sorry.
They're. Let me see, he's texting to me, I think. Um, and they're different, the, the, I'm just saying, the, these two different numbers from Myers, I actually asked those of them, all three of them to do it, but I think Dwayne's the only one that actually did it. I asked him to show the difference because they have a, some units that are good, most of them are good, like the minus fifteen, but they do make some that are good to minus forty. Um, they'll be up off the ground, so it really shouldn't matter, but I wanted to see the price, cuz if it wasn't that much different, I thought for peace of mind, knowing it's not gonna freeze up, cuz I know some of them, it's not the newer ones as much, some of the older ones could freeze up a lot.
They run, we all have one and did run constantly, I think they got too cold.
Um, Lonnie was two, two zone, twenty-two sear mini split, cooling line, heat, miscellaneous job complete. Cools up to a hundred twenty-two degrees Fahrenheit, heats down to minus twenty-two, eleven thousand seven hundred and thirteen.
Myers, there's two different one, there's thirteen thousand two hundred, and then fourteen thousand three.
Yeah.
Oh, that was an email.
Eighty, eighty-six thirty sear.
Why is this so much forward, what's different?
Uh, nothing, he, uh, to be honest, he just said that he lives here and he's gonna do what he can to help it out, but honest.
Okay, that's nice.
Told him that was very nice, but he wasn't expected, and it made me a bid that he's comfortable with, cuz we weren't looking for anybody losing money.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure that they were all apples to apples.
And those bids do not include Brian's getting them the power and then they'll, they'll do that, and then they'll get their stuff through the walls and their heads where they need to go, and all that.
Okay. You guys brought your things, we've done, I've got two over here though, so you guys wanna share one there? You guys wanna send one down that way, I'll just go off memory. No, you go ahead, you guys figure out, cuz Jeremy had some questions on it, I mean, I have, I have the, the drawing here, so. I know one thing that we talked about, Jeremy, was the um, maybe not doing the built-in desk, I think he's broke this down too, but has he broken it down like that?
So, so just saying here, office administration, repair, the door, um, construct forty-two, security door. I think we need to, just my opinion, I guess, is, is the doors obviously have to be done. The cabinet's gotta be built and the safety wall for you.
The counter and cabinet.
Yes, all that has to be done.
Yep.
I don't know that we need build-in to spend a bunch of extra money on build-in desks everywhere in all the rooms. And then Marshall's office, new custom oak, ninety inch wide, three foot, thirty inch deep. So basically hand building all of the desks in all the rooms, and I just don't, just my opinion of being.
Does he have, he doesn't have a pro camera?
Yeah.
Like what the desk?
Marshall's office, custom, yeah, that, that, frame panel, front end panels, new push button, dead bolt locks, and obviously we need that.
But we don't know, taking the desk out, how much you, that would lower though, right?
Right.
That's what I.
In that, like, I don't know that we need five new eighteen inch deep ammo shelves.
That goes in the closet.
And, and we, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just.
Yeah, that was.
I don't, I don't think we need a bunch of build-in desks for, I mean, this room alone is twenty-seven thousand. I don't know exactly what it'll save us, but it ought to save us quite a bit, I mean, hand building drawers and
Yeah.
all that stuff's not, it's kind of time consuming.
And we have to do all of that, I mean, of course, we'd have to find you guys decent.
And, and I don't know what a decent desk is, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong in the way I'm thinking, maybe a decent desk is, is more than I, more than I think it is.
The, the only thing I'm gonna say is, and you should answer this question, I don't care which way you go, I mean, a desk is a desk, well, it isn't, but when were the desk built that we currently have in the office right now, what year?
When we were in the fire station. Fire station, and that's been a long time ago.
What year, do you know?
Nine, let's see, two thousand. I, I'm judging.
Two ninety-nine.
It was either around two thousand.
That's all I, you know, I'm not saying that that price might not make a big difference, but I'm not sure you're gonna get that quality getting a desk from Quilt or wherever.
Anyplace else.
That's, you know, and we're still using them, now, with that said, Jeremy.
Built those for us to our specifications, we told them what we want.
With that said though, um, Mr. Die, I think, was the one who said, came in too, and said, we could actually take them out if we wanted to, cuz they're just screwed into the walls, I think. If we wanted, and he could refinish them to match the other wood, you know.
The, your current desk?
We could, but, but, but the only thing is, I don't know if they're included in with what Matt did as an appraisal, so. Now, now Kevin doesn't have that ability, because Kevin's just using their long, he basically is using a long table that he put a countertop on. So I don't think Kevin would really care one way or the other, he, frankly, if I used the wooden one in there, I, I don't think it's as big a deal for him. It was a matter of space, bringing it off the wall for space for him. But Brian and Jason, I don't know if he's got one in there, that was basically gonna be a countertop attached to the wall that made a nail with some drawers, that's all they've got in the back. Cuz they're, they're not in their offices, so, again, but this office was actually, actual built-in desk, so I don't know if he could.
I know Brian told me he was fine with anything no more when he's in there.
He's not, yeah, that, yeah, that's not, they don't use it.
I guess, I'm not, I mean, I'm not totally against it, uh, per se, I'm not at all totally against it, but I feel like that it's a question we should ask before we sign the contract, and if it's gonna save us ten grand, we can get two decent desks or move, or have those refinished and save five or seven grand, then to me, that's the right
Yeah.
thing to do, but again, I'm not totally.
Are those, are those okay, I mean, like, do you need new hinges or new handles or new locks?
They would need some new, I mean, like my cabinet, it falls off to the left, but that's just like the hinges.
I know, it's, it's a, it's just cosmetic.
I mean, as far as the cabinets themselves.
Pretty stable, yeah.
There's nothing wrong with the cabinets themselves.
Has ever made us all good.
Yeah, I mean, it lasts for twenty-five years, they must be.
Sweetie did a good job. And the one in Rain Office is just a desk.
Yeah.
It is not built, and I'll tell you what, I think.
Got a countertop over it.
And the glass top over, and I, I.
Camera, like your back camera.
Yeah, over this, but the desk, desk.
The desk has a, has.
But I can tell you, I think a split camera could get that thing.
And it went great.
I mean, I mean, I, I just couldn't believe how sturdy that desk was.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
But, but the drawers, and then, I don't know, maybe the drawers don't work anymore, I'm, I'm asking.
They do, I mean, it's, it's basically that desk right there only has the countertop on it, that's what it is, so, with countertop on it.
Yeah, the countertop is all.
Is it your own mix or mine?
Well, that's mine.
But you need.
Is it metal?
Yeah, it's metal, it's, but it.
And I do think we need to do something, just my opinion, I think we need to do something, and hate it really, cuz we're on camera now, and I think.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be like this.
Yes, and then there.
Yeah.
And again, I guess my, my take, and I'm open to anything, is to at least ask the question. I mean, we can let him know that he's gonna, if we decide go to that route, he's gonna get the work, but we would like to see what it'd save us to not have a building cabinet in the sheriff's office and the electrical office and build-in, build-in, or desk, excuse me, and build-in desk in here, but everything else be done as he said and see. And then if he's, if it's not that big, I mean, if we're gonna save five thousand, that's gonna cost us thirty-five hundred, then obviously, to buy two decent, or three decent desks, then the build-ins are gonna look a hell of a lot better than, than desks, so.
We, we're sitting inside, but.
Now I'm gonna ask Michelle, and the desk that you're gonna have in this office, will the front of the desk, will it be seen to the public? Well, that's why, even before we even had all that other stuff built on there, of course, Mike built, Mike has built something in front, so nobody could see under the desk.
Well, there'll be a whole counter.
Yeah, there's gonna be a.
There's gonna be a counter and then the desk right here, so nobody will be able to reach or grab.
Draw on the back of it either. Like the last two pages maybe?
Yeah.
So this out here would be the swing, those swing indoors.
He did a good job with these guys. Yes, he did. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, okay, okay. It's nice. I like the only way that way out.
I do too.
So what was your total?
Forty-six thousand one hundred forty. There's another, there's another installation line on the next page.
Yeah.
Got the forty-two thousand.
No.
Oh, forty-six, forty-six one forty.
That's a lot, but it costs that.
I'm not.
That's not really as high as what I thought.
No, I see, I think it went back.
I am one hundred, I am one hundred percent not saying that that's too much money for what they're doing. At, at all. And I know both of them and they, and I know Kenny does great work and always has, and I know they both do great work.
Yes.
My only.
One thing.
Uh, check, mine's not even about having it done because I don't think it'll take that much longer, but my only objection is from a fiscal responsible point, do we really need all that? That's, I have no problem with their number as far as being too high or too low or the, the concerned about the work that's gonna be done.
You're gonna, you're gonna be working in there, what do you think?
Well, they, the, the concept of it was to take what we currently have and put it in here. And then under the counter was storage, the cabinets on the wall is storage because we're gonna lose storage. We're gonna lose where that office supply room is.
Yeah.
That's where all the state board of accounts things are held. Now, that doesn't mean that that box can't be carried to that over there, but. That's still a place that the public can get, so I can't keep it over there. So, in order to lock it down, it's gotta be in here. So, that's, that's not the desk, that's just the cabinetry that you're seeing on the wall, that, um, and then these will lock down here. Cause that, you know, I'm bringing my own filing cabinet, he was gonna do that building, I'm like, now I can bring my own filing cabinet, I've got that. Uh, Michelle doesn't have one, but I have a second one that if she needs, she can use. If I have to have any lockdown thing in the basement until like I put on a schedule and get rid of it. But that, that was the concept. When they came over, I said, I want what we have right here, if we can, because. I don't need all the counter that's behind me, I don't use any of that, that's not coming in. Uh, it was just the desk, just the, the, you know, horseshoe, I guess, rather, for the desk. And Michelle, Michelle needed the same thing except more space, like in between her desk and the back, cause it's so.
Crowded.
It's crowded, yeah, we both are like bam, bam, you know, but that shouldn't happen over here. I mean, that should be fine, cause she's gonna, she's gonna be like right there. Um, and I mean, there's, there's, you know, desks that are horseshoe that you can buy, like Jeremy's talking, so that was our only thing that. That's what he based it off of, because I didn't know what else to have based it off of, honestly. I'm like, just base it off this, and then I took him into Kevin's and. He's basing that off that. Uh, I don't know that, I, I mean, that's a Kevin question, but I don't know that that's such a big deal for him. The only reason he's putting the shelves in that closet is because they're gonna change the lock on it, cause Kevin has to have it locked down.
Yes.
The ammunition is, and the current closet he has right now is not a, like, it's not a closet that will travel, it's one that is attached. Um, Brian and Jason could care less. I mean, realistically, they would do a countertop with some filing cabinets underneath it, so. They aren't, in fact, that's really what they have right now, they just have filing cabinets, you know, and then a countertop, so. Uh, he's probably will get them a little more fancier. But he, but that's his business and that's what he does.
Right, but I, I agree with Jeremy. We can, we can go through and sit him down, um, and say, okay, what happens if. We'll get him a desk, but we don't want it to be woodwork desk.
Honestly. I mean, like I said, I could be okay with this, I could be okay, but I feel like we need to ask the question, if we've got rid of all the built-in desks. Basically, that's all we're getting rid of, everything else has to be done. What is that gonna save us? And if that number's bigger than, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a huge number. And if, and if Michelle, just saying, if Michelle looks up and sees a U, decent U-shaped desk or something that's gonna be functional for you. Is two thousand dollars, then, and if the savings only gonna be five for all of them, then.
Yeah.
Then you, you go with the build-ins that, that are gonna look better and kind of help with the aesthetics and, and the.
Aesthetic. Well, I also think it's.
Designation of a historic place.
With the work, with the work that he does, he's trying to make it look like it belongs in the building, so. So therefore, built-ins are.
Eastern details.
Yes, it's gonna be, if, that's where a lot of this is, this is coming from, because it, historically, it's gonna look like it was already here. It's gonna look like it belongs. That's like the council room, he, I mean, him and Jeremy are taking all of those fronts off and show one that we can use. That cabinetry that's built into the wall with the ladder. I mean, he, he is, that's two men that are gonna put it right back.
Yeah.
Pretty close to where.
Right.
It would be, so, in a lot of places, they actually ask you to make it look historically pleasing, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking long-term because how long those have lasted, I was like, wow. Yeah, I mean, because we use them and I was, I was kind of impressed about how long they have lasted, to be honest with you, because.
We moved them from the fire station, Marilyn and I and Tom Tim, so. Carried those countertops ourselves in the cold winter time down the street to put them in the new ones.
So we're about eighty, if we took all of them at their eighty-three, eighty-three thousand?
Well, I took the highest of everyone and I'm at ninety-four sixty, and that's the highest one of anything that you mentioned, like. Uh, the highest fourteen-three hundred for, for, you know, an air, so I took the highest one and that's ninety-four sixty-seven, so. I don't know that you'll take the highest of all of them, it was.
I mean, like I said, as far as everything goes, I'm good with, I'm good with any of, I know all the HVAC, which I know Louis, that that number is. Gonna do a good job, and he's the lowest and lives in town. As far as the flooring goes, we could use that number for a budgetary number to know that that's gonna be the highest, or the. Also, if they beat us, if, if one of the other beats that number, then we go with that, we're saving money and.
Right.
And as far as the rest of it.
Yeah. Yeah, because, you know, we'll have AT&T, but the thing about AT&T, the thing about the electrical, the thing about all of that. Some of this number doesn't, I mean, it'd be great to think that I come straight out of what we make, there's no doubt about that. But you also have Ford utilities that can contribute to this move. Because you're running electric out of here, you're running stormwater, you're running wastewater and you're in trash.
I think that, I think your drop box is probably gonna be more expensive.
I think. Oh, I think it will be too. Yeah, I think it will be, but I mean, those are, those are, chairs, this is a number to stay with, but I mean, you have other. You know, like I said, for the drop box and for different things like that, because. You're running those utilities right out of this place, because when I went back to see how the town hall was purchased and how it was paid for, it's come out of electric. So, the majority electric, some of wastewater, because that's what's ran out of it primarily, so, um. I'm just saying I wanna grab those, I'm just saying that they have to be here, you know, communications has to be here. The lights have to be on, so, so I could, I, that's just something to think about. I think the drop box will too, Jeremy, you know how to get an instrument on that yet, so. But that's just something we have to, we don't, I mean, we just have to find a. We just gotta find our drop boxes sitting here, so. Uh, I know that Kevin will, uh, he's gonna want some sort of security, which can also, I mean, if he comes out of this, great, you know, but. We're gonna have to bump up our security, uh, with what we currently have, because he's got an office here. This is the main door, this main door isn't gonna be open in the evening, so.
So Brian will have to get a security system.
Camera and security system.
Which, context, nine dollars a month and one IP.
Exactly, and that can come out for multiple funds, so I don't know that it needs to be necessarily in what we're doing, so.
So do we need to make motions on each one first, or are we gonna make a motion first that we're gonna move forward with this project and then go back and?
Um, can I do the one with him pending what his?
Well, I mean, I think if you're gonna wait on the floor and, um, you should just make, award them all at your next meeting, after you get.
But we vote today to move forward, say we're moving forward with the project.
I think you can, I don't think you necessarily have to, but I think if you wanna put that on the record.
Well, I know the reason, the reason we're doing this is because a couple, well, not a couple, our biggest, our biggest.
Well, I thought we were here to approve that so they could start the work.
That's kinda what we're. Well, they, they just have other projects, they wanna know what's going on. They're turning down, they're turning down other people and we've not said, hey. Yeah, we're doing this, you know, cause like, like him, he can have the cabinetry started and then he can have it going. So, what does he require down? What is his deposit?
Fifty percent.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, fifty percent deposit required with all orders. Twenty-five percent interim draw will be made during the finishing pro- process, with the remaining balance due at the completion of the proj- project.
So do we have the money that we can go ahead and get that started and then pay ourselves back when we sell? Yeah.
So we're looking for the full finish.
I think you could adopt, couldn't they approve it with the changes? With?
Which one? This, this, the woodwork. I, well, that, that would just be, I'm sorry, I was lost there for a second. If you wanted to, to award that, that's fine, and then you could ask him, and if you decide. We're gonna pull those built-ins out, for example, desks, that just becomes a change order.
And then that.
Not to exceed this amount.
Change, change on your costume.
Right, I mean, it, something could come up and you would have to change it to exceed that amount. I mean, you could add on, but it just takes more action to approve a change order.
And then, why can't, and I'm only asking, I don't know, why can't we approve everything and approve the flooring portion? With the budgetary number, and then if one of the other numbers that I have at the August meeting affects. Without a name in the flooring, just a, a number for flooring, this is, this is a budgetary number for flooring, and then if one of the other companies comes in. Lower than that, we just take their bid of that at the August meeting and say, this is a, this is a flooring company, but we can award the painting and.
Yeah, you can award them all, makes sense for the floor.
Is there a reason?
Go ahead.
Cause you don't have two rooms. We don't have two other, but okay.
Well, and, and I, I wouldn't feel, I would, I wouldn't feel right without getting more flooring, I just wouldn't, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think, it's just not. In my eyes, it's not the right thing to do.
Okay.
And I apologize, it, it just, that's.
No, I, I, I agree. Now, ninety-six, what did you say, as the total, if we did everybody the hi- the highest bid, would you say it was gonna be?
As it stands now, every, you took the highest of every one of the things you got, I have ninety thousand four sixty-seven. So.
But you got five thousand in the HVAC that's gonna go down for sure, and then we're budgeting a number because. We don't know exactly everything, a fifteen thousand for the electrical and that might, Ryan does not think that will exceed that at all.
No, but I think.
He, yes, he's like, I don't know where we're gonna.
Right.
And that's what I.
He may not need that extra.
Exactly, yeah.
Michelle, Mich- Michelle, Michelle, and there, there's enough outlets for them to make it work.
Right.
So.
Okay, so I need to run down, characterize now. Okay, so we only have the one for this one.
That is correct.
Okay, so, do I have a motion for the Dai Woodworks, um, proposal?
Yeah, and I would make a motion, but I would read that motion, say, subject two.
Yes, asking.
Not to exceed the total, because you don't want it to exceed that, it could be less than that, right? You might run the right kicker.
Yeah, I don't think you have to do that.
You don't?
No.
Oh, okay, we can just do it and then if it's less, it's fine.
If it's less, it's completely fine. If it's more, it's just gonna be up to you guys whether or not you can accept to do more.
Right.
I mean, you have to be able to have that flexibility, because like, just the electrical, for example.
Yeah.
If they get into something, it's like, well, we gotta do something else, then you have to approve that change order, or you just don't do your project, or something else, I don't know what that is, but. Yeah, I don't think you have to say that not to exceed that on a contract like that.
Okay.
So I, I do wanna ask him, so I'm confused too, I do wanna still ask, um, Mister Dai and Gary about the, the. Build-in cabinets, I would like to ask that question, but other than that, I will make, I will make the motion that we accept their bid. And he's saying we don't have due contingencies.
Correct.
But I just wanna make sure that question gets asked of him, before we sign a contract with him.
And that's a built-in desk.
The desk, we need the ca- we need everything but the, the, all three built-in desks, I think.
And I can ask him that and bring that information to you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and let's move to the painting. Do I have a motion for either one?
I make a motion for the painting here.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Yes, absolutely, understand.
Either way, I'll abstain.
Yeah. Okay, and then we're on to the, what are we gonna call this, the HVAC?
HVAC.
Okay, so we've got the three beds, which I don't have.
I would, yeah, I would make the motion to use new heating and air at eighty-six, eight thousand six hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For.
Okay.
Do you have to have that? Okay.
You need the backup on the paint, I thought you did. Because you're choosing.
So we have to get a reason why we're choosing the higher.
You're choosing the higher one, the paint.
Choosing the higher one be- because of the type of paint and the brand of paint.
Did you request Sherwin-Williams, will you give your? Okay.
Do we?
I didn't.
Kinda like to see that.
I think we need to too.
We're gonna have to, hold on a second.
I can reach out to.
I have an answer.
Cause I, I'm the one that gave them material, I didn't know that we were requesting a different paint, or a special paint.
Well, I'm just making the decision based on what I feel like the product is, not that, between the two, my obvious choice is gonna be. Not picking bear. That's why I picked, you shut up saying, I mean, so they're giving me. If that's part of what you want, is Sherwin-Williams and not Bear?
You didn't ask.
But I didn't know that until they gave me what they were choosing.
See, they, they, they might change their bid if you wanted to use.
Cause if they knew you wanted Sherwin-Williams, they would've priced it.
They would've bid.
I would've picked anything else but Bear. That's probably.
He's just saying we need to redo.
I get your sound.
Yeah, yeah, we need to redo it, which they both have, they both have the square footage, I can just call them.
Okay.
And have them redo it with Sherwin-Williams.
I think that's a good idea, yes.
So then, we'll need to withdraw that and we'll table the painting, um, bids until we get that answer.
Yep.
Um, so then our next one is the flooring, right? Is that the last one?
You're not doing the flooring, you're tabling that.
Sorry, we're tabling flooring, okay.
Yeah, so then you'll have the, you know, first air and D D. That's where we are.
Electrical.
Well, electrical, you don't, you don't, we don't do anything, cause we own the electrical one, and we're making, I mean, they're working. It's our guys doing it, so.
Yeah.
I've been demanding.
I bet you're forgetting.
Okay.
Anything in order.
Yeah. We're not gonna go against it.
All I can tell you is, you never have enough. Uh, I went in when I had to go sign that paper for them, and of course, they moved down, and I asked her how she liked it in, and she said, well, it's smaller, but she said. The thing we've had to find out, we don't have the outlets here.
Yeah.
Where, where we want them. I mean, they have some outlet, but it's not where.
Not where they wanted them.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're done with the bids?
Yes.
So now we're down to the town hall sale?
Yeah, I didn't know if, um, I, I put that on there because I wasn't sure if we were going forward with the town hall sale, if we're going forward with this, I'm assuming, and that with the contingency that. We are able to stay there, stay there until.
Till this is finished.
Correct, correct.
I want somebody to say, you gotta get out thirty days.
But before you do that, I have a question. Jeremy and I don't know if you can answer this.
Yes.
Did Matt Walters get with you on the empty lot?
It's on, it's on, uh.
It's on Zillow.
It's on there, and he actually, the very first day he put it on there, he had somebody. Another agent text and say they had somebody that's possibly interested, wanted to know if it was buildable. And I told Matt, uh, after talking to you, that we could give, we could give him a week to get with the building department. And see if they're able to do what they want to do. Now, the one question I did have about that really quick is, do they have to present it? Do we have stuff? do they have to present it? Do we have stuff, uh, in our laws or, uh, rules for the town where they have to approach us also, or if we pretty much strictly, if Bonwell says that it can be done, it can be done?
We have to accept the offer.
What, the offer, but I'm talking about when they come, do they have to come to us about what they want built there? I mean, I'm just saying.
They don't wanna put strip club up, is what he's saying. I mean, do they have to come?
I didn't say.
No, no.
No.
Basically, do, do we have to approve what's going to be put in the town, is what he's saying?
I'm not aware that you have to.
Building wise, like, if somebody wanted to just put a lean-to there and something that's not, gonna be very easy.
He's making that as a.
I'm just saying, if they're gonna put.
The only thing I know is a mobile home, maybe, and I told Matt that. I said a mobile home, we, you, that's the only thing in that ordinance that I could find, that you cannot put in a mobile home. But that's all I could find, I couldn't find it.
And that's just, that's all. And so anyway, he hasn't got back to me.
So we will accept the offer, correct? I mean, the town, the council will accept the offer when it comes.
Yes.
Oh, you'll have to do that in a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if they say they, we can give them, say, okay, you have one week to get with the town or with the building department to see if what you want to build there is approved to be built there. And if you don't get your answer in a week, we can pull our acceptance.
Yeah, you can set a contingency like that.
He's just saying, the empty lot, he's just giving it easy.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Only because that was the first question we got about it, is a building, can I build on?
I, I, I got messaged about it too, about what could go there and.
Did you get that appraised by Matt?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have, anybody else appraise it though?
No, do we have to have more appraisals?
I have to have that too.
Seriously?
How, what are the appraisals for?
Thirteen thousand? I did not know, you had to practice your voices.
Yes. Just thought of that. Just that, you said you're minimal, maybe, except.
Oh, I have them too?
Right, that's the average of the two.
Who?
Beth Downey.
I don't know, anybody else?
What's it now, I'm doing?
Well, I don't, I think it's okay, I just, oh, that's right on the.
Okay, so both of them, I'll leave them.
Both of them, yeah.
So are you contacting Beth or is she?
I do, I can send it to you.
Anything else that we need to know?
Here. I guess, uh, we're gonna have to see those numbers now for the town hall, which I understand, but, um. I guess we need to also ask, cause I think, uh, Mr. Die and Gary are gonna be the biggest, obviously, the majority of the work and see what their timeline is. Cause I think we really wanna, and we wanna give ourselves a little bit of.
Oh, Gary, leave it.
Give ourselves a little bit of leeway.
Yeah.
As far as. So.
I don't know, we did, didn't we? We had to sit in the fire station.
Oh, when they came up.
Three, six, forty.
I forgot about that.
Okay.
I know this is a dumb, but this is not, what are we leaving over there in the building?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know what Matt included. Well, they're not, I don't wanna say what Matt included. I don't know, we haven't put it up for sale, so.
Yeah.
That's not in that offer of what is included in the building.
I know the guy's office, how that was, they had pop, two, uh, two-door filing cabinet here and down here.
Well, those will not.
And those will all stay.
No, no, those, no, they're, that, but we'll take the filing cabinet, yeah. I mean, if it's attached, probably not.
And, and I don't know about sales, can't remember about hang, yes, but, but I mean, anything that's not attached, I'm sure that will, if we can use, it'll be brought over here, so, yes, okay.
Anything else, Marilyn?
No, I just.
No, I'm, I'm just going through the.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
No, no, sorry.
Yes, I, yes, I do have that. Um, Mike was gonna come in and talk to Michelle, uh, today, and it was early. Uh, the Methodist churches dug out that stump over there, and they had to take part of the sidewalk out to get it, to get the whole stump thing. And they're going to put some sidewalk in. Is there still money that they can, the town can offer on sidewalk?
Five hundred.
Uh, what do they have to do to?
I told him on Sunday, I told him that they have to tell me who they're getting and they have to provide the invoice to me and.
Oh, yeah, okay. Good, good.
That we'll pay the company directly, but you guys have to approve again.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
If, if they're going to. I just need to get their invoice first and then we'll prove it.
Okay, 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 okay.
Jennifer? Jeremy?
Uh, Ryan wanted to know if the BBS could close off, well, down the street by the congregation.
Oh, yeah.
No, not.
Our academy.
Academy for one block for Vacation Bible School next week.
So we need a motion, um.
I'll make a motion to approve the church closing down Academy Street for Vacation Bible School.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Teresa?
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
While you're here, so we can get this answered, um. I sent you an email after the last meeting about mowing and what we have to, I've got, with, they hired Mike Smith who worked for the town. Uh, but this is independently, Mike's mowing a property for a hundred dollars each time, and I need to do a mowing lead on that property. We have a couple of others that, um, look like they're headed into some foreclosure issues. Um, so they talked about, rather than that, cause I can't keep paying them a hundred dollars, um, so they talked about Brian and Jason. Well, I don't know the legalities of that, I don't know about warrants and most proper, I don't understand how any of that works. We have been back and forth with this so much. I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing to cover the town and them.
I think it's probably in the town's ordinances exactly, but normally, it's just providing that, a notice, and then it's usually ten days after that.
Yep.
The town can go in and mow it, and you can prepare it accordingly.
And if they use the guys, I'm just assuming I, I use their hourly rate? How do we, you know, do I use hourly rate, fuel?
They do it on our company time, wouldn't they?
I believe that's right.
Hourly rate, no, not paying them, I'm saying how I get the, how I get my money back in quarters.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I got, I understand now, my apologies.
Yeah. No, 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 you're fine, you're fine. So, so their hourly rate, and then what about fuel and, and the maintenance and the mower? I mean, do I factor that in or do I not factor that in?
I don't recall what it says about that.
Just straight up, okay.
Cause like, I think the city uses a contractor, so it's just, that's the bill.
We can't.
I, no, I know, and I can't, and there's a way, there's a way that that's figured, but I don't recall right now what that is.
I don't know, but, I mean. You can, it just, I can't do it at a hundred dollars, no, I can't do that.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean.
It may be something where the council sets a rate, but I'm not, I'm not so sure on that.
Okay, so you can figure that out.
Yeah, I'm glad you reminded me, I.
It's okay, I just, I really wanna get this thing, cause like, if something happened to Mike, I, I know he independently is doing that. But I don't have anything, if something happened to him and he got hurt, I feel like we're still gonna be responsible for that, especially the fact that he is a part-time employee with the town, but you didn't hire him that way. And something happens, he doesn't go to work or can't go to work, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We're on, we're on a slippery slope there, and I don't want him to not be covered or us, you know, I mean, that's not fair to him, putting him on their deputy as well as us, so. That idea, was there something else that we had, had we really been? That we had, oh, you had the lead from the last meeting, do we have anything else for Tyler? Oh, I did, the cover bridge money, we wanted to know about it. The cover bridge, do you remember that?
Yeah, my first question was, we can't find the, I don't wanna say D, but the language.
I don't have, I can't find them, I'll keep going back to the council minutes, that's, I mean, I can probably do that.
Cause my thought is, if it's very specific, that there's a reversionary clause, that if it's not used for that purpose, it goes back to the heirs of that person.
Okay.
That's usually for, like, real estate, like, I leave this.
Sure.
Land for a park, and if it's never, or if it never uses a park, or if it ceased to use a park, it goes back to my heirs. With a donation like that, I think what happens is, basically, what you say is, well, the, the purpose was to help the town for park equipment is adjacent to that purpose, and so that's probably fine to do, because you have no need to use it for the cover bridge.
Correct, okay. I'll see if I can find it in a minute, if that gets me directed to someone else.
That would make it a, come to that.
Yeah, I will look at other things. I was just wondering where to start and what information we needed, so, all right, perfect. We were thinking about the, cause there's money saved.
None of what it's.
But.
Gotcha.
That's what we're thinking. I just wanted to get you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. We have any more, so our next meeting is August seventh. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I want to. Oh, I want. That's why I didn't, it's locked me on that. Yeah, sure. Oh, you're talking to Jeremy. Oh, wait, it's not in.
Thank you.
No, we adjourned.
Oh, thank, I just put it up here.